For transparency purposes, I realize this is a new avenue for us when it comes to virtual meetings where no one is physically present. Normally, a quorum, a physical quorum, has to be present and there has to be a chair person. We've been able to get away from that, like I said, from the executive order from the government, sorry, from the governor. This meeting will be recorded and that recording will be posted. There's a chance we will have technical issues. I'm unsure if we'll have to do this again in the future. We all know that we're going hourly by hourly, but there may be technical issues. If this Blue Jeans meeting fails, I will be unable to put out a public link to everyone. I have contact information for the school committee, but I won't be able to put out a public link for another meeting if it's needed. For transparency purposes, again, the meeting will be recorded and that recording will be available for public review. And then during our next meeting, either virtually or in person, those people, person of the public can come onto that meeting, make a comment during public comment. If something the public says sways a committee member's vote that happened in the previous session, that vote can be reconsidered by motion. So there are plenty of ways for us to ensure we have transparency and ensure that all the public voice is provided to us even in these times of rapid changing and out of box paradigm shifts. So we're going to strive to maintain an open and frank discussion even within our boundaries. And that kind of ends the ground rules before we start into the regular agendas. Anyone have any questions about the ground rules as they're laid down? Hearing none, we can move into the call of the regular meeting to order, which we did, and we'll do the pledge of allegiance. And if you're on video, I request you stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is to ratify the agenda of March 18th, 2020. I'm going to go on mute and have any discussion. Does anybody have any comments about the agenda as presented? Nicole?
Sorry, I was having trouble finding the mute button. No, I do not.
Don?
I'm fine.
Chris?
Nope, no comments or questions.
George?
No comments.
I'll entertain a motion to ratify the agenda of March 18th, 2020.
So moved.
Motion by George, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chris. How do you vote, Nicole?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
I vote yes, unanimous. Agenda is ratified. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is public comment. For those that are here for the public, if you'd like to do public comment, can you please make it known in the chat function, which is in the upper right-hand side of Blue Jeans? If not, we will have another public comment at the end of the agenda if we miss you. Wait a couple of minutes to make sure everybody can find our new technical aspects. Okay, seeing no chat comments, we'll move on to the next item of the agenda, which is the approval of minutes. I can share the agenda so people can see it. I'm sharing the agenda here and I'll move to the school committee minutes of February 26, 2020. Give everyone a chance to review that as necessary, and we'll come back for a motion
Move to approve.
Motion by George, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole. Any further discussion on the meetings, excuse me, the school committee meeting minutes of February 26, 2020? Okay, hearing done. Nicole, how do you vote? Didn't hear you, Nicole. Nicole, how do you vote?
I abstain.
Abstain? Don?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Chris, how do you vote? Yes. George, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes, unanimous. We also have that, Patty, we have the business meeting minutes and executive meeting minutes listed on here as well. I didn't see those in the packet.
Yeah, I think, no, I think the executive meeting minutes need to be moved to the next meeting. We were resolving, we won't resolve a date. You have the two that you reviewed.
Oh, understood. Right, very well. Okay, can I entertain a motion to table the executive meeting minutes of September 18th and November 20th, 2019 for the next physical, regular business meeting?
So moved.
Motion by George?
Second.
A second.
Second by Chris. Any discussion on table in the executive meeting minutes of September 18th and November 20th, 2019 to our next physical meeting? Okay, hearing none. Nicole, how do you vote?
Yes.
George? Ah, correction, sorry. Don?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And George?
Yes.
And I vote yes, unanimous. We will table those meeting minute approval process to our next physical meeting. Excellent. All right, now I'm going to move to the next item on the agenda, which is a report of a superintendent. I will go on mute. Please take it away, Superintendent Moore.
Okay, so in your packets, you have the usual principal reports, so the principal report from the Coombe School, from Principal Paula Bell. A couple of acknowledgements on his report is Kristen Daly, who is the physical education teacher there. She sponsored the Kids' Heart Challenge celebration this year, and they raised money for the American Heart Association. $4,000 was raised, which is great job with them. And the other highlight I would like to talk about is his recess water table. And Principal LaBelle has continued work on his transformation of some of his recess area into a maker space. So this is a water table project. And again, he is working with Amanda Howe, our STEM Teacher of the Year, and some of her students at the middle high school in developing the actual water table. And now they're going to build it. They've designed it. They used a shark take kind of experience with teams of students to determine which group was the winning group. So the students that are working most closely on this project are Connor Baron, Zachary Taylor, Danny George, Michael Chisholm, and Sam Johnson. And so hopefully, they expect, although maybe not so much now on the same timeline, but hopefully by the end of the year, this will be a completed project. And he has a picture of it in his report. So it seems to be a pretty fascinating project, a follow-up to the golfing, miniature golf project before. And there's 409 students. Does anyone have any questions on his report?
None here.
The next report is for the Quashnet School, Principal Mary Kate O'Brien, and some of her highlights and acknowledgements. Her National Elementary Honor Society students constructed a ninja-style obstacle course to raise money, also similar to the Coombe School. It was the jump rope for heart activity in February. They had 62 students participate, and the group raised $3,695, which is outstanding. And then two events that have happened recently, the Wet Fest, which was on the Friday before our February vacation. That is an annual event for our fifth graders. And it's a collaboration with some great outside partners, the Cape Cod Groundwater Guardian Team, Cape Cod Cooperative Extension, Groundwater Guardians, and the Maricor of Cape Cod. And they come in every year and they set up probably 10 to 12 stations that are all very hands-on learning opportunities about water and water conservation in Cape Cod. And so all of our fifth graders annually participate in that, and that was a wonderful event. And her other acknowledgement is for Steam Night, which is a shout-out to Mrs. Whitten, the STEM teacher, and the Science Curriculum Committee, as well as a host of other staff members for creating an excellent opportunity for families to come in and learn together. It was very well-attended, very crowded. And so Principal Brian is thanking her teachers for the activities that they created, our parent volunteers, MMHS National Technical Honor Societies were there as well, and the Cape Cod Wildlife Group for helping to make it a really enriching night. And she has 465 students. Any questions?
No, but I wanted to say, since I unfortunately had to miss the event this year, that I've actually heard from a number of parents that they thought it was the best Steam Night at Quashnet yet. So I guess just pass that along to Jamie, that they just, I've got a lot of positive feedback, just even like randomly in the grocery store and stuff. So great job at Quashnet.
Yeah, there was definitely a wide variety of activities and some pretty fascinating things. It was excellent. I think our school committee chair participated as well.
I wasn't going to say why that, why it was awesome, but thank you for calling. It was absolutely great. And I do echo Nicole's comments that kudos to Jamie Whitten for an awesome job.
Okay. So if we're ready to go on to the Mashpee Middle High School report, Principal Balistrachi, 731 students, and a couple of his highlights, or the one in particular, is the first year that we have held the civics event, which was exposing our eighth graders to all of the different roles within, or jobs and professions that sort of fall under that government side of the world. And so it was on the 28th of February, and there were stations set up in the gym, and students would rotate through and be able to ask questions of those who came. And so the attendees included representatives from the Mashpee Police and the Mashpee Fire, the Tribal Government Center, other town officials and elected officers, the Harbor Master Waterways Committee, United States Military Branches, and federal and state elected officials. And I'm sure we've missed a few in there as well. And again, acknowledging that our chair participated. And I know that it is a great way to sort of expose our students to roles that they may not fully understand, and it will help them as they move forward with some of our civics projects. And a shout-out in particular to social studies teacher Sean Corey and the Mashpee Middle High School History Department, and our Community Outreach Director Consuelo Carroll for facilitating that event. Any questions? More comments?
I guess what I would have is, oh, sorry, stepping on each other a little bit there. The only comment I guess I would have is, do you see this as something you're going to try to do on an annual basis going forward? Because I think it's an amazing, great idea, you know, civics is something that kind of has been falling to the wayside a lot. And the idea behind this is great. So I would like to see it go forward every year, but I'm wondering if that's the plan.
That is definitely the plan. And I think in terms of civics education for our students, we have a lot of different ideas for expanding beyond this is our sort of a first dip into the water. But, you know, some of the ideas involve our students actually visiting some of our town government sites that many students have never set foot in or really understand some of what goes on there as well. So there's, definitely, this is part of our new annual events.
And I wanted to thank, again, I thought it was a spectacular event as well. I had a great time engaging with the kids. I think the best thing that was done by the sponsors and the people driving this program was that we did get together after the event was over for feedback. And I think it was very clear that everyone that was involved wanted to continue it. And I think all they said was, I need more time. And I agree. I'm looking forward to next year.
Also in the packet, you have Director of Special Education Jamie Curly's report. If anyone has any questions on that. He's giving you a little bit more of the Special Ed 101 course she's been running throughout the year on school district responsibility. And we have 265 IEPs. Moving on, we can go back if you do have questions. We have Athletic Director Matt Traveri's report. And a couple of highlights is our boys track won the winter indoor South Shore League title, going undefeated in the Tobin side of the league, which sounds very complicated. I'm not sure all what that means, but it's a good thing. Mashpee Falmouth Senior Gymnast Hannah Burnett made the Massachusetts Senior National Team, which is the top 18 senior gymnasts in Massachusetts. Also, the coach of our Mashpee Falmouth Gymnastics Team, Shaylee Pyers, received the Coach of the Year Award in the Cranberry League. And then our students who are South Shore League All-Stars for Winter. In boys basketball, Kendall Rose and Ryan Hendricks. In girls basketball, Amaya Peters and Ashley Kelleher. In boys track, A.J. Gavoni and Gabe Palais. Gymnastics is Ava Kelly, Hannah Burnett, and Ava Desamone. And in hockey, it's Jack Vanitsky. And unfortunately, I think most of any of the All-Star events were canceled. I know the basketball games were canceled this year. But we recognize those students and all of their hard work. You also have, oh, sorry.
Patty, it's Don. Just a quick question, backing up to the Special Ed report. I see out-of-district dropped from '22 to '20 in the month of February. Did those come back in district or did they leave the district?
I'm not sure. Maybe Mr. Funk knows the answer to that. It could have been someone aged out, moved out, or came back. So I'm not sure.
Don, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yes.
Okay. We had two students that were in the collaborative that moved out. So you know, they're not under that rule, April 1st rule, that we keep them for the rest of the year. If they're in the collaborative, they move out, they have to be picked up by the, they have to be picked up by the community that they move into. So there were two collaborative people.
Okay, thank you.
And so you have the report from Consuelo Carroll, our outreach coordinator. And I think I said it last month as well, but Consuelo is making such a positive impact on our school community. She's very proactive and very hands-on, and she's such a doer that she takes ideas to a higher level than we might have expected. And she's very much supporting a lot of the ideas that our teachers and administrators have. So it's great to have that person who just makes events even better than we could have made them. So we're very appreciative to have that position, and particularly to have the person that we have in the role. Okay, next up is there's a personnel report in the packet, and we do have a part-time computer technician finally onboard, John Green. And then a couple of shifts, a couple of shifts in who are taking places of people who shifted out. So Tracy Fisher is a new recess monitor at the Quashnet School. And Stephanie Pischko is a new special education teacher at the middle high school. And in terms of student enrollment, on the summary sheet, you'll see we have 1,611 students in total. And I want to remind everyone that our current pool choice window is open. And at the end of March, might be extended given our current situation, but that will be when, if there's any area where there are more applicants than there are spots, we will hold a lottery at that point. I'm not sure we're there yet because this is our first window. But we've had a steady stream of applications come through my office, which is good. So if we're ready to move on, I have the shareout on the emergency preparedness drill. Are we all okay to go forward with that conversation?
Patty, I just wanted to say that I loved Consuelo's newsletter. I love that you're, I love that we're sort of advertising volunteer opportunities. I haven't really seen this pushed out anywhere, so I don't know if this is just going out via email. But if there's anything we can do to help spread the reach of this, I think it's a great, just maybe we can follow up on the outreach working group or something. Just thinking about how to, and I'm curious if she got any, you know, responses from that, you know, if it seems to be working on her end.
Yeah, I'm not aware of that, but I definitely, I think when I saw this in, I think it was in last month's packet as well, I did discuss that I wanted to include it in my weekly, or at least once a month, in the email that goes out to everyone. And I think we can link it as well into some of our other online platforms for others to read. So that's definitely something we want to do.
Great, thank you.
I agree. And so on the emergency drill that we held, so on March 3rd, which was the primary election day, that was a professional development day for all of our staff. It got switched from what would have been this Friday. And the morning, we spent as an entire staff at the Mashpee Middle High School engaged in emergency preparedness drill. And I have to give a shout-out to Detective Brett Calhoun with the Mashpee Police Department. He was sort of the individual who took the lead on planning this event. And it was a coordinated event with first responders from across the Cape. The Mashpee Fire Department and the Mashpee Police Department were primary, but we also had the Barnstable County Sheriff's Office, Catuat Fire Department, and two other fire departments as well. I don't have it in front of me, so I apologize for that. But what happened was, so everyone was in the auditorium, and we sort of explained the morning and gave anyone an opportunity to participate in a different way if it was something that might bother them. But there were three scenarios that were set up, and we were divided basically into about groups of 80, maybe less. And you would rotate through the scenarios. So there was one in the gymnasium, which was teaching all of our staff sort of how to charge against an intruder. Some people did actually role-play and practice, other, you know, most of us just watched. But they had a lot of great tips that weren't just for a school setting. They were really just for us personally as well. And everyone was very appreciative of that. Though that section was mainly taught by the Sheriff's Department personnel, and they were really quite expert at their explaining and the rationale and how to do things. So it was really excellent. The other scenario, the second one or another one, was barricading in a section of the high school. A little bit different than we normally try to barricade is that there was little to no time. And so we were able to sort of look at some of the weaknesses that are in our current practices. And we learned a lot about each other, as well as what we'd want to improve upon. And then the last one, or the third station, was in the cafeteria, and there was an assumption there that there had been mass casualties because of an intruder. And so that was really helping our staff get a different perspective on what would happen if, God forbid, we were in that situation, what they might expect to see from our first responders. And like anything, as they continued to practice each of the scenarios, I think they got better each time. And then we did debrief in the auditorium at the end, and I received a lot of positive feedback about that. We reminded everyone that the training was there, was meant to better prepare us for an intruder. It was not something, sometimes people sort of went in the place of, you know, if they had to deal with a difficult student or something, and we corrected their mindset that this was meant to be sort of for intruders. But we did learn a lot. Sadly, it's sad that we even have to do that. And we then, we did provide lunch to all of our staff, as well as all of the first responders who participated. That was quite a large group, so shout-out to, I think it was Roach Brothers who provided the food. And then in the afternoon, the teachers were allowed time to work on various independent projects. And then the pair of professionals were with me, and they were watching a documentary that documented a principal's journey for a year in a very poverty-ridden area, and really goes about how to treat kids and how to see kids. And they all loved it as well and thought that the whole, all the teachers should see it. So I think it was a pretty productive day. And in terms of the security piece of it, I think we all walked away a little bit better equipped for what might happen someday, or hopefully never. But the more you practice, the better able we are to stay calm and be the leaders that our children need. Any other thoughts on that?
No, thanks, Patty.
Okay. And then the third bullet on the agenda is the update on the 2020 MPS Family Opinion Survey. And in checking with Panorama, we've had an 18.5% completion rate, which is 256 responders out of potential, well, they show it as out of 1387, but they might be counting individuals in terms of which schools you can respond to. So someone might have gotten three survey links because they have a child in each school. And this is day 24. We've done one, I think, one or two reminders. So I think the outreach group will have to get together, the working group, and figure out if we want to, any other strategies to try and increase the response rate.
Did, did everybody get their census?
Yes.
Home, you know, for the US Census?
Yes.
Yeah, I got mine.
Did you notice, did you notice how like the first one came and it was in a big envelope? And they were telling you where to go online to enter a code? And then the next mailing that came was like a reminder like five days later, and it was in a different size envelope?
Yes.
So just, just want you to know, the old-fashioned mail way is still, still in heavy use to get people to respond to surveys. Emails are just not going to be as reliable. Emails are just not going to be as reliable these days. So I'll take it up on the working group. I mean, we might, maybe we can meet virtually during the closure, Patty, so we don't let too much time go by.
Sure.
Just in terms of develop a strategy, I'm not suggesting we, you know, can really work on this while schools, while this whole virus thing is going on. But, but yeah, I would, I would definitely be up for that.
Okay.
Did we try, Nicole, last year, text messages?
No, we had, we explored that this year, especially with the new app, but I don't feel like we have, well, I should back up. In order to send text messages, we would have to use, we would have to get permission, maybe when we do the Power School updates from each family. And since we were pushing out this MPS app, we thought that that might be a mechanism to distribute the link. But ultimately, when we went with Panorama, we couldn't do that. So it, 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 it's more limited options through them, which we've, we've learned, right, Patty?
Right, right, we have learned. I think the thing too with the app, so we can push out that says, hey, look for an email for your individualized link to the survey, but that's all we can do. And the app is also has a broader, maybe doesn't have all the parents on it, but it has a lot of kids, so it has a broader group in it. So we can't just push it out that. Yeah.
Yeah. But I did hear, you know, I had a lot of people tell me last year, oh, it was an email? Oh, okay, I'll look for it. Because, you know, they were like, can't you just send it out on text message? I'm more likely to get it. But that's a much more complicated proposition.
Yep, something to think about for the future, maybe.
Yeah.
Yep, absolutely.
I forgot what the, the response rate was last year, though. It was more than 18%, correct?
Oh, it was like 40.
Yeah, it was high.
Yeah, I thought it was pretty high. Yeah, thank you.
Very, I mean, from, from normal school surveys, I think last year was quite remarkable. But I think it was because of the diligence of Nicole.
Well, I mean, the, that, adding that extra response option gave us an additional 15% last year. So, I mean, that's one of the things we can explore, is to send out this survey on, on paper, you know, to folks who didn't respond. And, and we could also just send out a reminder note to all the families, you know, that they can either respond by mail, or they can go into their email and complete the survey, if Panorama's willing to leave it open.
Right. Are we ready to move on to the report of the business administrator?
I think so. Are you complete?
I think so.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent DeBoer. Mr. Funk, you're next.
Okay. You have in your packet, the budget to actual for FY '20. I am going to come back to this front page. If you have any questions in the budget to actual, I'm more than happy to answer them at this time. I'm going to come back to that front page at a, at a later date, once we go through any questions you might have on the budget to actual. So I will entertain any questions, just give me the page, and we'll go to it, and we'll talk about it.
I didn't have any questions. Don, do you have any questions?
So I had a question in regard to the AP testing. I know it doesn't show up directly in here, whether or not that has taken place.
Has taken what? I'm sorry, Don.
The reimbursement of the AP test?
Right, the money is, the money is being reimbursed to the parents as directed by the superintendent. And then if you want to know the line item, and what we're going to do is we do in the past, as we have done in the past, we will charge it to the page 19. On page 19, if you go, if you look at the high school instructional, you'll notice that there, there was a line item, high school testing, it'll be charged to that line. And naturally, it's going to send that line into a negative figure, and you know, at the end of the year, we'll back out a certain amount to cover any deficits. And I'm going to get, later on in my presentation, I'm going to get to the deficit where we are right now, and where we hope to be at the end of the year. So we'll be able to cover that very easily when I give my final report.
May I add something?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say those checks have all gone out to the families.
Thank you very much, Natalie. Any other questions?
Nicole, do you have any questions?
This is Don, just a follow-up on that. So that balance of $1,800 reflects the reimbursement that's taken place?
I'm sorry, let me, yeah, go to that page.
I don't think that, I don't think the checks have hit the munis system yet. You just recently, they were in that very large bulk of sign-offs you did recently. I think the last meeting, but then they take a while to throw through, flow through the system.
Right, and that's coming out of the student activity funds. That's where the money was deposited. So that money will have to go down to the town treasurer, have the money transferred from the agency account, or the savings account into the checkee account. At which time, once that transfer is made, we will issue the checks. And I believe that that's already gone down. If it hasn't, when I, when I, it has.
It has.
So. So it's just a matter of making out the checks out of the student activity account. Any other question? Go ahead.
Nicole, anything?
Thank you.
Yeah, my question was more general, just related to whether the closure is going to affect expenditures at all? Is everything still moving out as it would as if school were open? Or does this schedule, you know, put us in any kind of bind in terms of executing our budget?
Can I speak to that?
Yes.
Okay. So as of yesterday, Darlene is totally up to date with processing everything that needed to be paid. And she's going to be coming in once a week. She and Cheryl McIntyre are checking the mail. Our mail is being held at the post office, and they are picking it up once a week. And Darlene intends to go through her, her invoices, and then process anything that needs to be done at that point. And some of the, the town hall gave her, them, us, permission. So she has shown me groupings of invoices that I've signed off on, and they are accepting that during this time.
So how will we sign off on warrants?
I don't know if they're going to back into that, but knowing that we're in the current situation we are, and not wanting to hold up payment of invoices, the town halls, I think, I could be wrong, but I think that's what Darlene said, waived that at this point, just to process the invoices that have come in.
Okay, thank you.
We can take that offline, Patty, because I don't think they have the authority to do that without our concurrence. That's, I believe that's a district policy, covers that as well. We just have to be careful that we're following all the letters of law. I know we're, I know we're outside the paradigm when we can do this after the fact, but we can.
And I could have, I could have the language wrong that Darlene shared, so definitely we can follow up.
I'm also going by memory, too, and you guys, you guys have proved me many, many times in a row that my memory's not infallible, so we'll, we'll, we'll take that up afterwards.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's something to follow up on. I think if all the warrants are current, you know, our signatures were on all the ones, and if they're only being processed weekly, then we have maybe a little bit of time to make sure that that's correct.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right.
Okay, so it sounds then that we're not anticipating any slowdown of expenditures?
No, absolutely not.
Okay.
Well, there could be a slowdown of expenditures, but we're not going to necessarily slowing down paying our bills. You know, without, without people there to put in orders, we'll be, we'll be behind a little bit.
Right, but at this time of the year, you have to remember the time of the year. Most of the materials have been, it's been very, you know, the requisitions that have been coming down to me have been very slow. And the reason for that is most of the stuff is bought at the beginning of the year, when we start school year. Now we're getting into, you know, a, a, a skid of paper or something like that, but most of the stuff has been purchased.
So Paul, what is the biggest challenge to you as the business manager in this climate right now?
Not being able to get into my office. My biggest challenge, I mean, as far, and when, when I finish my presentation tonight, you're going to see fiscally that we're in excellent, excellent shape, so.
I, I don't doubt that. Thank you. That's all I have for now, Jeff.
Thanks, Nicole. Chris, do you have anything?
I do not, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. George, you have anything?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Thanks, George. All right, Mr. Funk, it's all yours.
Okay, would you, in your packet, turn to page 41. And you can take that piece, that document out, it'll be easier to follow. And I want you to, and I'm going to go back to page 16, which is the cover page for all the budget to actual. So if you'll notice on the budget to actual cover page, that the balance for our salaries is $8,994,155.82. When we built this budget back in 2018 and got it into munis, what we did was we took all of the salaries and made sure that those were covered. So the offset of the $538,000 was going to come against expenses. So when we built the budget back in 2018, or entered it into munis, there were certain things that has hap, have happened since that time. And I'm showing right now a balance, if you look now at page 41 in the packet, you're going to notice that there is a balance of, projecting a balance coming out of the salaries of $302,031. And I have listed all of the reasons why we came up with that 302031, which we did not know about when we entered this salary part of the budget into the, into munis. There were, you know, just run by them quickly, you have the figures in front of you. There were changes in teachers, it's Coombs Guidance, the staff wasn't hired until November, plus at the lower steps, so you have money there. Coombs Teachers, the .5 literacy coach was not hired in FY '20, and half of it went to Coombs, and the other half went to Quashnet, so there's $70,000. Change in staff at the high school, we, we hired at low, lower steps, $34,000. Coombs sped paraprofessional, $58,072. We're using the, using the preschool revolving funds to cover those two paraprofessionals. In the KC Coombs Teachers obligations, and this may change, we didn't have people retiring that we had projected. Quashnet Nurse, change in hiring staff, didn't get hired till October. We had substitutes in there, and when we put a substitute into a position, we charge it to the substitute account. And then you see that tech position, which just got filled, it was filled right after I did this report. So it shows a, a balance of $302,031 that we see coming out of the salary side of the budget. If you look down at the bottom part, which is the expense side of the budget, you'll notice that we are in a negative, $92,329.25. That's the negative amount. If I look at that amount, the 302 is going to offset an amount, but we still have the rest of March, April, May, and June to expend money out of the expense side. And I think that's what we were just talking about. As we have done in the past year, last year, which was the first time we had, I believe, an offset of $538,000, what we did is we only backed out the amount, the negative amount. So for example, if we were going to, if we were going to back out $92,000, we wouldn't have to, because we have an offset of $302,000, which would leave us with a balance of $210,000. Now, we're going to spend that $210 between March and, and June, so, and that negative is going to get higher, probably in McKinney-Bentham Transportation and other sped costs that I know are coming down the road. Not so much other districts, but there are other things coming, tutors and so forth. So, you know, right now, if we closed the books today, we'd have a $210,000 plus balance. But that's not, I don't see that happening. We might make it so we zero out, and we don't have to touch the choice money. But this is just a unique situation. And, you know, the principals, you know, I haven't stopped any spending, we don't have to stop any spending or anything else. So I will entertain any questions on this, and then we'll move on to the other things. So I'm just giving you the outlook on the, where we are. Entertain any questions?
Nicole, any questions about the salary surplus?
No, thank you.
Don?
Nope, looks good.
Chris?
Nope, everything looks good, and I wouldn't expect anything less from you, Paul.
Thank you, Chris.
Absolutely concur. George?
Same comment, Paul, thank you.
Thanks. Moving along, next, grants. Are there any questions on grants? And again, we have, the Assistant Superintendent, Hope, Dr. Hanscom has, has most of this money earmarked, so they're really, it's really just going to close itself out. We did announce, I don't have it on here, we did get another skills capital grant, and Dr. Hanscom might be able to help me out, because I think I quoted a wrong figure. Is it 207?
It is 203, and some change.
I don't know why I got that seven.
I think the seven is part of the change. Can I make a quick comment, Mr. Funk, on this?
Absolutely.
All right, so one piece with that new skills capital, that is an FY '20 grant that we need to spend down by June 30th. But I did reach out today to the governor's office, where the grant is coming from, because we will find it very, very difficult to create the health services classroom that we want to, if we are not in school to do it. So I am hoping they'll allow us to push that spend date out beyond, depending on how long this closure goes. If they don't, then we'll get creative, and we'll figure it out. But, but that is a piece.
You know, you know, I'll take care of it.
I know you will, Mr. Funk. Thank goodness for you. All right, I'm going back on to you to ask somebody else questions.
No, I think that's, that's smart to ask. If we can get an extension, that would be great, you know? Who knows, day to day? Paul, can I ask, it's hard, because I'm, I don't have a printed copy of the packet, so can you tell me what page we're, you're walking through now?
Oh, I'm on page 38.
All right, that's what I thought. I have to turn off my camera when I need to look at the I have to, um, turn off my camera when I need to look at the packet, because I have to turn my monitor the other direction.
That's okay.
That's why, that's why I keep coming in and out. Is everybody still there?
I'm still here, I'm just waiting for the question.
Yeah, I'm good, I just, I shared the, the page that, um, Paul was talking about
Oh.
On the screen, if anybody wants to look at it, otherwise, uh, we'll move on.
I just see a big gray box.
I don't see it either.
Oh, really? Well, that's disappointing.
Yeah, we saw the
Sorry Patty. Nicole's back.
Hi Nicole.
Hi. But I, I can, I can do it.
Oh, there it is.
Okay.
Oh, thanks Jeff.
You're welcome.
Carry on, Mr. Funk.
Okay, um, moving on to the, um, the revolving accounts and balances, um, you have any questions on those? On the community school, we may be able to get, uh, I got to look into that. Um, we usually use that for summer school. I usually buy the software package that we use, so you'll start to see that come down. I talked with the athletic director about the, um, athletic receipts, uh, coming down. He's, uh, starting to spend that down as we get into the spring. Any questions on that? On your next page, you'll see, um, school choice revolving and expenses. Uh, we're up to, uh, January 31st, 60,026. Um, the, the February payment had not been posted, so, uh, I didn't have it in there. Um, I did go away, I, I took some vacation time, so that's why this is rather early in March. Uh, but you can still see, even with that, we're at, uh, 396,503, uh, 79. Any questions? Uh, moving right along, uh, one of the questions at the last meeting was, um, dealing with the school lunch, uh, food services, and one of the comments that I made is, um, that we are not going to be, be able to subsidize, um, the, um, I'm sorry, let me, you're not going to be able to run a food service, um, program, uh, without having it subsidized by the town. And one of the things that I, I said that would help, um, if we could get the Medicare expenses and the health insurance and group insurance, and you can see what it, what it is, uh, from 1, 120 to 2, 229 for two months, you can see that the health insurance is But you can see, if you move over, it's $37,864.4. Now, I kind of redid this, um, the format for the school lunch, so that you can see what it's costing per month and what it's, what it, what it has cost, what it has cost, uh, for the fiscal year. So, um, that would be a, you know, picking up the wages, all the commodities, all the school lunch costs. And I have had this discussion with the superintendent, and the superintendent said, felt that they, they are employees. I know it's a revolving account, you know, but we just can't, you, you're just not going to be able to run a program. This size school, uh, system, uh, without some help from the town. And, and it's coming to that, uh, and we still go back to the 25,000, if you look at, at the beginning, the CIP, they took the 25,000, which, um, they took out. No, he's definitely going to need the 25,000 and probably more. On the 74,000, on the 74,000 deficit, you'll notice down in very underneath that, in the box that says, January claim not posted, so you can take the 37,346 and take it off the 74,000, because it hasn't been posted yet. So, it does bring that figure down. Now, I have to give Gus kudos on this, because if you take the 37 off the 74 plus the 25, um, he's not that far from, um, balancing out, uh, um, the, um, school lunch, uh, budget. And remember, in February, we had a February vacation, so that's no revenue coming in. So, when you hit those months, like February, December, uh, April, where you have a week out, that's a big impact on your school's, uh, food service. So, um, I'll entertain any questions on the, um, school lunch program.
If I may, Mr. Funk, just two questions quickly. Um, so the February claims not posted yet either, right?
That is correct, that is correct. That won't come up until March.
Right, and then the $25,000 technically wasn't removed from the revolving account, he just didn't receive an extra $25,000, correct?
It was physically, it was physically removed from the revolving account.
So, that mean, well, that, if it was physically removed from the revolving account, it was approved by town meeting to be given to the food service, so it should be back in the revolving account?
No, it was to be used for capital.
Oh, no, 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 no. It, it went into CIP and they said to him, well, you can take that 25,000 and spend it on capital improvements for the, for the, uh, um, you know, for all of the kitchens or whatever. It, he could have done that, he left it in the revolving account.
What happened to our, to our legal questions about the, the ability to do that?
So, we, we landed with, um, an opinion from a couple of lawyers that work for the, our firm, and basically feeling like that wasn't, um, something that should have happened.
Yeah.
But they wanted to look at the wording of the article at town meeting.
Okay. So, would, would you be willing to, um, you know, at the deference to the committee, to have this set down to the working group to work with you to determine exactly, in addition to the 25,000, how much we'll have to offset if necessary from our appropriation as well as what we're going to go to the town to request?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with
Go ahead, Paul.
No, I don't have a problem with discussing with the, uh, working group. I think that's where it should go, so that we get a clear understanding of the negative 25 that, you know, that, that they took out of the revolving account, and they physically took, took it out of the, uh, the revolving account and moved it to CIP. It wasn't like
Yeah.
They left it in the revolving account.
Now, understood.
Okay, so I want to
No, no, I, I didn't mean to step on you. Yeah, I think that, I agree, we've been kind of skirting around this, uh, issue for several months now, and I think we need to get to the nitty gritty and pass up exactly how this affects the school lunch program from the schools and indirectly affects the children in this town. So, this was a, not the way things should have went down, and we need to really get our, our, do our homework, figure out the nuts and bolts and, and present it to the town about what they need to do to, to assist us. Does anyone on the committee have an issue with us sending that down to the working group?
No.
Nope.
Nicole?
No.
Chris?
No, sir.
I believe I already heard George, but George?
Yes, you did, and yes, I'm fine with it.
Perfect.
Especially since I'm on the committee.
Exactly, especially since Don and George will be taking care of this excitement anyway. Um, although I expect that, that we'll be working on it as a, as a committee as well to, to get our ducks in a row for how we're going to present our messaging to the, to the town. But thank you, Mr. Funk, I defer back to you.